Hope everybody remembers it's early tonight.
Hey there.
Howdy.
Looks like we're chairless. How are you guys doing?
Pretty good, how about you?
Okay, full day. Jeff, Mr. Lacy, I can't say Jeff with the two over there. Thank, thank you for sending that decision about the Walpole case.
Yeah, that's the next one following on the heels of Tracer Lane.
Yeah.
I think Donna is going to be joining us tonight. And she'll have some stuff to say about perhaps that case. And she went to the Mass Municipal Lawyers Association Annual Conference where they had a whole session on Tracer Lane.
Wow.
That she attended, so.
It looked like at least we're heading in the right direction in terms of connectivity, but we shall see. I'm sure to guessing that everyone know that knew that we were starting at 6:45.
Deacon should because it was his idea.
So originally he had put it for 6:30, so I was here for like a little bit before 6:30. And then no one was here and I was like, what is happening? So then I checked my email and I saw that I got changed again to 6:45. I was very confused.
That must have been stressful.
Yeah, I was like, why is no one here? Hello.
And Nathan.
A few minutes later, I'm traveling and I just ran out of dinner and had to connect a mobile hotspot there. So glad to, oh wow, we're like just at Quorum, huh?
Deacon's just coming now.
That's who you were just talking about, you said Walpole and no one was here.
Right. Nathan, where are you?
I'm in Burlington, Massachusetts, outside of Boston for a conference.
It's not anywhere exotic.
No, no, it's definitely not exotic. Jungle out here.
Yep.
So, yeah, anyway.
You can go to any shopping mall you want.
That's right, that's right.
I'm sorry I'm late. Can you all hear me?
We can.
But can't you?
You can't see me?
No. There we are.
Marginally better.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay, so I'll open the meeting. I'll note that we're being recorded. My sense is we should probably, we should probably talk a little bit about the meeting ahead of us and and do minutes until, until seven. I did not know if, I'm not sure when Donna is going to join us, but. So should we start with, I don't see anybody from the public here other than members, so I'll skip public comment. Let's go to.
Deacon.
Please.
Can I make a comment as a member of the public? Well, I don't know, we have a little time to kill. Just wanted to introduce that probably this month I've given advice to four or five different parties that have requested zoning interpretations for Chutesbury.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't mind doing that. I had two of them today, in fact. Seems like interest has peaked a bit in doing things in Chutesbury.
Did you do Virginia Brown?
Yes. Yeah, and she's someone who doesn't have internet and can't attend a meeting like this, so she wants me to call her. But there have been others, and I think I've, I've resolved all of them to the owner's satisfaction. And then also asked them to, to see confirmation from the building inspector. But it's just, some of these things might pertain to what we do as a planning board. A lot of it just pertains to an understanding of zoning and what they, what they need to do. Often it's just go to the building inspector for something. Sometimes it might involve the zoning board of appeals, which I'm on, so I'm happy to talk to them about that. And occasionally it's something that might come before us. But apparently Grace is sending all these folks to me. And I, my ideal scenario here would be that all of the folks save their questions for our meetings, come before us with their maps and their information. And then I can answer the questions or other members can chime in. But all the board members, the planning board members get the benefit of an increased understanding of, of our zoning. That doesn't happen if I just do this stuff between meetings on my own.
Yeah.
So I, I wanted to put that before the board and see what people thought about it.
So I'll jump in, you know, because Jeff identified this a few weeks ago, I think when the, the tendency for people asking questions sort of started picking up. And I think he had offered, you know, a suggestion of basically saying we should talk about it in an open meeting and see what the, the board wants to do, which I think is the appropriate step. So rather than just sort of having one member, now regardless of how much Jeff knows and how good intention is, it's still, you know, if they're asking of the planning board and they only get one person who does, you know, and it's via email, it's not really compliant with the intent. So I support, you know, Jeff's recommendation that as a matter of course, people, you know, we just carve out time at the meeting, you know, and say we, you know, just, just like we do public comment, we give it, you know, 20 minutes, half an hour, depending on how many people come forth. I think it's fine to ask the chair to put it on the agenda. So if John Doe is in interest, what we should be telling them is let the chair know that you're interested and you get put on the agenda, but then talk about the issue at the meeting. And I think it's partly to Jeff's, you know, we benefit from the education process, but I think it's also that if we're answering questions, it should be in a public setting. And if there's the public who actually wants to hear what we're saying, that they should be able to do it. You can't do it on a private call, you know, or a private visit. So I don't, I don't, I think it's a good idea. I think we should, someone should communicate that to Grace that, you know, we're, we're here, we'll carve out time, but we should really have that. At lea- at least initially, and it could be that we say, you know, because we've done this before, you know, there's a follow-up would make sense, you know, if someone wants to go, if Jeff wants to visit, but at least we've initiated and then we've sort of designated Jeff as this spokesperson, representative for the planning board. So I'm all for it.
May I make a quick comment, I know there's a lot more people showing up. But it, you know, it seems we should think about trying to get, let, you know, have Grace with the message and also, you know, on the website and stuff, you know, a lot of these are basic zoning questions that really would go to the building inspector. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong. So I think, you know, rather than having people come and, and do this at, at the open meeting when we often have a busy agenda, you know, we do want to try and steer people like to, you know, like go look at the bylaw and, you know, talk to the building inspector. Because, you know, that's going to catch most of the situations, most of the stuff we get isn't even going to be before the board. Right? So to the extent we can, I think we should direct it to the proper channel and avoid taking too much time with the, in open meetings. To the extent we can.
Well, here, here's what I would suggest, as maybe a middle ground. If it's, if it's something that's going to come to the planning board, it's, it's in our wheelhouse, the kind of permit or approval they're seeking is going to be rendered by us. I, I will have them attend one of our meetings in the education and guidance section of our agenda, which the ZBA already does upfront. Chuck always used to say, anyone hear from education and guidance? And by was, we deal with their questions. And similarly, similarly, I, well, I'm not sure about the zoning board. The planning board meets once a month at least, right? So there's not that long of a wait. The zoning board could go a long time without meeting. So somebody who has a zoning board question, something that would come before the zoning board, if I did it the same way, it could be months before they get some answers to their questions. And then, all right, so, so that's a little bit of a problem. Another problem is our zoning, many aspects of it are, are unusual for Franklin County. I don't believe our building inspector, you know, as, as competent as, as he is, he deals with a dozen towns. He doesn't know our bylaws like we do. He's not used them for 12 years. And I would rather that we be answering our zoning questions than he, because I, I just, I just don't want to delegate. I'm too nervous about errors and mistakes.
That's a, that's a good point, Jeff, I, I hear that.
So for, for the purposes of the planning board, would, would you be comfortable with me assessing what the, what the issue is? And if it relates to us in some way, I will, I will get them to attend our next meeting. And, and then we'll talk about it.
That makes sense.
With, with, with the zoning board, if there's a meeting coming up that I, that I know about, I'll put them on that agenda and answer their questions then. Or if there's no zoning board meeting in the offing, I'll just answer their questions.
Yeah, I think you're basically serving as a screen to figure out, you know, should it come before us? Should we, no, can you answer it and have it go elsewhere? I think that makes sense. I'm hard pressed to think there's an emergency situation where someone can't wait the, the three or four weeks. It might be, but it's probably more rare than common.
Yeah, but if it has anything to do with us, it would really benefit our board if we, if, you know, if not only I answered, but others from our board, it would help us all better understand the zoning that, that we administer in Chutesbury. I, I see Donna.
Donna is here. And raising her hand even.
Evening, she probably won't be later, but she'll try and, she'll try and manage. Just two caveats, I think that your zoning bylaws are very comprehensive. And I think that Jeff's right, that it makes sense to manage them at the local level if at all possible. The only caveat I would put in is I don't think that Jeff can be a veto. I think that Jeff can basically say to the person, I think the building inspector can deal with this, or I think you need to go to the board, but you always have the right to go to the board. So that he's not making a board decision on his own that may be challenged later. So that's, I, you know, I think the plan's great, I would just put that one caveat in.
I, I always add the caveat, you know, if, if it's, if it's, doesn't look like it's going to a zoning board or the planning board, if it's just a matter for the building inspector to arbitrate, arbitrate, that that person is the final decision maker. And you're only getting an opinion from me, building inspector is the final say. And then if you don't like what the, what building inspector says, you can appeal that to the ZBA.
Yeah. Okay. Are, are we wrapped up with this enough to, to move on to the, to the meeting?
I, I, I think I, I, yeah, I'll, I'll talk about this at the next meeting and we'll see how it goes.
Or, and we may be able to talk about this some more after the hearing, depending on how long it goes too. So, so my thought is that, is to call the meeting to order and to, to ask someone to, to read the notice of the amendments.
So we're at seven o'clock and we're going to start the hearing.
Yeah, 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 because I, I mean, people are, people are here, they're expecting us to, to do this, yeah. So, so Michael, can you read the, the agenda item?
Sure, so the notice is the agenda item, is that correct? Okay. Let's see, the Chutesbury Planning Board will hold a virtual public hearing on Monday, October 17th, 2022 at 7:00 PM to consider two amendments to the Chutesbury zoning bylaw. The first amendment would replace the current section 8.10 ground mounted solar electric installations by adding language to comply with the 2022 Supreme Judicial Court decision, provisions for energy storage systems and new mitigation requirements, and by updating the noticing process. The second amendment would be to the Energy and Utility Section of the use table to not allow principal use of energy stored systems. Texts of the proposed amendments are on file with the town clerk and may be inspected during normal business hours. And on the town, town website, www.chutesbury.org/calendars at least 48 hours before the meeting, this meeting can, well, that's, that's all that we need to read.
Yeah, yeah, so, I mean, that's what this is about.
And did you officially open the hearing, Deacon? Okay, okay.
Well. I'm not sure where to, does someone want to describe it more, more completely? Or, are there people here who are ready to talk about sections of the, of the zoning changes?
I think I would just say one thing, Deacon, that per you and Becky's suggestion, there was a copy on the websites, it's currently there, that highlights, if not all, are very best to capture all of the, the changes from the current bylaw to this amended version. So that's, that's been available to the public for the last few weeks and that's helpful.
Deacon, I, I, I think that, that the bylaw changes can be summed up in, 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 in quickly by saying that in view of a Tracer Lane case, Supreme Judicial Court case that has come down and given what happened at our last town meeting, the planning board sought to, to address those things and correct some of those, those problems. I know that we took the ESS, Energy Storage Systems, aspect of it, instead of making it its own bylaw, we incorporated it into the, into the solar bylaw. And at the same time prohibited it as a standalone use in town. So it can go as an accessory use with the solar bylaw and it's contained therein. We also, we also made it very clear that energy storage systems that are part of residential solar, the kinds of solar that, you know, that I have on my house with the batteries in my basement is not subject to, not subject to this. It's, it's permitted as a right, I think it's a site plan review from the, from the zoning board of appeals. So we made that clear and that was a little bit of a glitch at the last town meetings, we took care of that. We also added some requirements, believe there's something in there about noise now and a few other things, the historic part was bolstered, a little better description of what has to be done there. So some more submission requirements. And finally, throughout the bylaw and in recognition of the Tracer Lane case, we've tried to link what we're doing with public health, safety and welfare. And that's responsible for a great deal of the added verbiage in the bylaw to justify it as you go right throughout. So a court looking at it won't have much confusion about why you're doing what you're doing because it tells them right there. So those are, that's pretty much what we did. Michael, would you agree?
I think that was a great summary. The only two things I realized I would add, one is that we did a substantial reorganization so that the flow was a little bit better for the reader. So that, so if you were trying to compare the whole, the current one with the new one, it doesn't map out the same way, but that was intentional. And then the other thing, just because we lifted up out of the definitions of the zoning bylaw generally, definitions of large and small scale, non-residential, so that it was clear and it put in the body. But I, Jeff, I think you covered everything other than that.
Great, I see Mike Vinskey has his hand up.
So Deacon, you're, you're moving to the, the public testimony part of this hearing now. And now that the board has presented it.
Well, I, well, I, I was meaning to, I mean.
Well, well, that's what Mike Vinskey is, he's not on the board and he's a member of the public. So I, I think we just need to move into public testimony.
Okay, can I ask one process question? Since Donna's here, is there, Donna, before we go into, you know, I'm sure you'll have responses or help us respond to any public comments, but is there anything that you want to sort of share at the outset?
Yeah, I, I think for the public to, because Jeff's summation was great for people that have read Tracer Lane, have read Kierzey's and understand the issues. But I think for the public to understand a little better, recently the Supreme Judicial Court has come down with two decisions. recently, the Supreme Judicial Court has come down with two decisions around solar, solar array zoning that are really, really significant. Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 3 talks about, it's called the Dover Amendment, and it talks about things that you cannot regulate per se with zoning except to bulk and dimensions, and that's education, religion, daycares, and the ones that we're very, very familiar with in our zoning and, and have been there for a long time. Solar was added to that, but with very, very specific language. And the courts have essentially come down and said it doesn't apply to residential small solar, but to large solar, the, it does apply. And what you need to do is you need to balance out what's reasonable regulations for large solar. And the things that you're going to balance is how much of the land area in town is available for large solar. Is the zoning bylaw so onerous that it essentially forbids it by design standards or other issues that make them too cost prohibitive? Or that basically doesn't, that basically doesn't allow solar ultimately. And what, and what the court ultimately said in Kirsage, the most recent case relative to this, is that you have to look at the overall zoning bylaw and you have to make sure that there's significant detriment to the public health, safety or welfare. If you can establish that and you have a decent amount of your land available for large scale solar, then your bylaw is going to be considered a reasonable regulation. If you only have 2% of your land available, like in Kirsage or Tracer Lane, or if the regulations are so onerous that it doesn't really allow solar, then it's not going to be considered a reasonable regulation. And I wanted to just give some real kudos to Michael for the introduction to this section. Because I think Michael did the thing that the Tracer Lane Court and the Kirsage Court really requires. He related what, how these regulations are so tied to public health, safety or welfare that they're necessary. And he did that by talking about how well, we're, we're a town that only has water supply through wells. And so clearly the water supply had to be protection, protected. We're a town with a lot of wetlands and clearly wetlands are a significant part and necessary for protection. He didn't just use the phrase public health, safety or welfare, but he really tied it to why these regulations matter. He tied the danger of ESSs, Energy Storage Systems, standing independently, the danger of meltdowns and the issues around that to public safety. And that's why they're not prohibited as standalones and have significant regulations within the bylaw for safety purposes when they are allowed as an accessory use. Everything is tied there to show that the reason this regulation is set up the way it is is to protect our resources, our historic, our historic amenities, our water supply, our wetlands, our forest land, our flora and fauna to the point, because these are all clearly important parts of the quality of life in Shute's Berry. And they would, and there would be a significant detriment to the public health, safety or welfare if we couldn't regulate the way we can regulate it. And so that's the whole point of this bylaw now, how it fits into the new cases, how it fits in to the public health, safety and welfare. And so I think that talking about it in that context will help people to understand what these provisions do. And I believe that Jeff had done some of the calculation around how much Shute's Berry is available for this. And that, and that we, it is a reasonable regulation based on the land area available for development of this.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you. Are there any other concerns before we go to public participation? Hearing not, I'll, I'll call on Mike Vinsky.
Thanks, Mike Vinsky, 391 West Pelham Road. I appreciate all the background information that, that you guys have given. It's clarified a lot, a lot of things. But in general, you know, my concern is that, you know, with global warming, with the continued pressures on the, on the electric grid and just the, you know, the, the absolute essential element of having electricity available to people. I'm just, you know, it's, it's my thought process that, you know, Shute's Berry should be looking at ways to, I don't want to say become electrical energy independent or anything like that, but I think they have an obligation to try to get as much electricity able to be generated in a, in a, you know, least environmentally impacted way and everything. So initial question I have is, is what is the, what is the towns, where is the town moving as far as that is concerned? I know the, the Energy Committee is, is, is reactivated and I, I would imagine that they're looking at this sort of thing, but kind of trying to get a feel for, do, you know, is, is Shute's Berry heading towards trying to become more energy independent? Or are we, are we just going to kind of, you know, leave things the way they are, not, you know, not use any of the natural resources we have and, and, and then go from there. Thanks.
Deacon?
Yes.
I, I can just, I don't want to get too in depth because I, I want to just keep this focused on the, the bylaw. But Mike, just since I'm the chair of the Energy and Climate Action Committee, I would, I would say that we're, the committee is looking at an array of things, including aggregation of electricity, which I think the majority of municipalities in the state have done. We're having conversations about community solar, where individuals can buy into solar and other places. We're also looking at conservation, which is the often undiscussed part of the equation. So for example, I think the town is applying for a grant to secure the energy envelope at the school. So it's more efficient. And then subsequent to that, replace the LEDs so that we're reducing the energy usage. So there's a multifaceted effort and I would just end by saying that we have been meeting, like every third Tuesday, we're actually looking at changing the date. But come to a meeting because they're pretty robust conversations.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes, please, Jeff.
I, I, I'd just like to mention to, to Mike that I, I did calculate the, some of this stuff, trying to figure out whether we had enough, enough, the bylaw allowed for enough land. And the, the Wheelock project is a six megawatt project on 30 acres. That's roughly.
I think he's frozen.
Okay.
You're frozen, Jeff.
Right at the good part. The amount of electrical usage of all of Shute's Berry. Hopping and bopping.
You got to say it all over again.
Okay, okay. I, for, for Mike's benefit, the Wheelock project is six megawatts, which is equivalent to the entire energy generation demand of Shute's Berry. So all of Shute's Berry is, all of our electrical generation is equivalent to what Wheelock generates. The, this bylaw, if it was fully built out, would produce four times that amount of energy. So 24, 24 megawatts. So it, it would end up being five times the, the energy usage of Shute's Berry if this bylaw were built out, all the sites that we've provided for were built out. So that kind of satisfied me that we were doing our bit.
Carrie had her hand up a little bit ago too.
All right. Sorry, I didn't realize I was on mute. I don't know if you saw earlier, but the Historical Commission had a, something that they had written, they would like to say during the meeting. So I didn't know if you wanted to do that before or after public comment.
Well, we will, we will certainly, we'll certainly do this during the hearing. I mean, I know Henry's here, so.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I didn't know if you saw it in the.
Yeah, yeah. There's plenty of time. I mean, he will, he will have time to do that for sure.
Okay.
Not seeing, I mean, do you want to do that now, Henry?
Yes.
Well, here you go.
All right, we're on. So on behalf of the Shute's Berry Historical Commission, I want to thank you for undertaking this thoughtful and comprehensive overhaul of the town's solar zoning bylaw. The Historic Commission reviewed this draft at our last meeting. Overall, the commission unanimously agreed that the revisions bring clarity to the zoning requirements for historic preservation. And we'll ensure that the planning board has all of the tools and information it needs to evaluate any special permit applications for commercials, solar projects. The commission did, however, feel that some minor language changes are advisable, especially to the extent that these changes make clear that the town believes that historical and cultural preservation is essential for the community. Rather than an afterthought to be tacked on, we feel historical and cultural conservation should be co-equal goals along with other aspects of land use and open space protection. MGL Chapter 40A, Section 3, Paragraph 9 stipulates that zoning bylaws may not unreasonably regulate solar energy systems, except where necessary to protect public health, safety or welfare. Health, safety and welfare, however, involve both social and physical factors. Preserving history is well-recognized as essential for social well-being and welfare. The universally recognized importance of historic preservation for the community's welfare is underscored by the sheer number of related state and federal statutes and regulations enacted to further this aim. Preservation efforts should be aimed at protecting significant sites related to habitation from the 18th century to the present, and also protecting indigenous cultural sites that predate Euro-American settlement here. That's Euro-American settlements. These cultural resources hold meaning for all Shute's Berry residents, regardless of our ancestry or cultural experience. For resident and non-resident indigenous people, however, views on cultural preservation are framed by a history of erasure, genocide and displacement from the land that became Shute's Berry. These community members have a right to see their heritage sites survive for future generations. For this reason, we respectfully submit the following recommended edits to the draft bylaw to clarify the importance of historic preservation to our community. And I will read Section 810-1 Background, Page 3, Last Bullet. You know, we recommend that it read this way. Shute's Berry's forested areas have many sites historically important for its Euro-American settler history and also pre-contact indigenous cultural traditions. Preserving historic and cultural resources is critical for social well-being and welfare. Historical preservation improves the quality of life in the community, protects this physical appearance of the community, creates more educated communities and strengthens social continuity and engagement. Understanding the values, ways of life and actions of those who came before us provides direction for the future. A growing body of research is demonstrating that the preservation of historic places provides a sense of belonging and identity that is beneficial for emotional and mental health. As stated by the Massachusetts Historical Commission, quote, "The continuing presence of historic properties in Massachusetts immeasurably enhances the quality of our lives. They help to establish our sense of place and to define the very character of our communities." End quote. In Shute's Berry, this includes both indigenous and post-contact history and culture. By requiring notifications to tribal governments, this bylaw acknowledges our responsibility as a community to work with indigenous communities to protect their heritage sites. And then Section 8.10-1 Background, Page 3, last paragraph is a slight recommendation. It reads this way, I'll read the whole thing. "Consistent with Massachusetts zoning law, this bylaw seeks to address the need to conserve health, to secure safety from fire, flood, panic and other dangers, to facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, water supply, drainage, sewage, schools, parks, open space and other public requirements, to conserve the value of land and buildings, including the conservation of natural resources, to prevent light and pollution of the environment, and finally, to preserve the shared historical and cultural features that enrich our community and bind our residents to one another." That, that's, that's it.
Thank you.
I, I just have a, a quick comment. I, I, I don't have an issue with, with the first part. I mean, is that, Michael, is that, is that like a whole new paragraph that gets added someplace or, or is that a modification of something?
It's, it's a modification of the last bullet in the background. So, you know, like Donna was talking about how we're tying everything to different stuff. The last bullet in the background is about historical features. Some of that paragraph is already there, like the quote from the Mass Historical Commission is there.
Okay. So, so it's, it's a rewriting and bulking of that.
Yeah. And then, and the second thing that Henry just read is just adding a phrase at the very end, the shared historical cultural features, because it's to address historical.
Okay. The, the second one is, is, is where I have a question. Because that's where, that's where you brought in Section 808 of the Acts of 75 or 76, or, you know, that's the old purposes of, of zoning, which is still out there. Nobody really knows where it is, but it's still there. So what, what Henry did was tack some historic stuff onto the end of that. But does that, does that violate your intent, which was simply to quote verbatim, what's in 808?
Yeah. Well, it's a good point. So working backwards, I mean, and I think just sort of like Donna to give context that, so there's, there was passed, was a, was legislation that says what, basically there's an agreement in legislation that said this is what the purposes of zoning is. And then it proceeded to get disappeared. So it's that reference that we wanted to unearth it because we thought that was important. So I guess I would leave it to Donna, but I think I would probably keep the second part, the last paragraph in the background the way it is, just for that reason, Jeff, that we're sort of keeping the integrity of citing that. And really the relevance is having, having the bullet
above it, that first suggested edit, reference the historical protection of, or the protection of historical and cultural pieces. So I think I, I would add that and maybe not add that extra phrase at the end. But Donna, do you have thoughts?
I mean, as I said before, the whole point of illustrating and drawing out public health, safety, and welfare is critical to this bylaw being approved. I'm wonder, I'm, I mean, I, I listened to what Henry read, but I, I, you know, it was hard to track it as to that last paragraph. I think that taking what Henry read and seeing what's in there that isn't in the last bullet, that they beef up, that concept of mental health and historical grounding that would go to the welfare of the public in general might make sense to insert in there. I think the one caution I would give to Henry and to all of you is that at some point, if these bylaws get so long and we put in so many, I mean, we took a lot out because it was getting to be more and more onerous. And I wouldn't want the court to look at our bylaw and say, "Look, it's sixteen pages. We've already decided it's onerous," you know, because of the length of it. I mean, I don't think they'll do that. Obviously, the courts are more intelligent than that, but I think that we, we have to be, get the concept across, because I agree completely with the concept Henry's expressing, but make sure that it's set as succinctly as possible. So ultimately, developers and anybody reading this bylaw doesn't get so mired in the bylaw that that could be an argument against it being approved.
If, I guess what I would offer up to the board based on both what Henry suggested and Donna said was to sort of take the suggested last bullet, look at the language, see if there's a way of bulking up the last one without making it too long and keeping it focused, but sort of, you know, underlying and underscoring that connection that Donna just, you know, referenced. And then I can send it to Donna. I think it's to Henry, but I think we can probably pull some stuff out of there, but not necessarily, you know, accept the whole thing as is necessarily. I think strategically figure out what, what should be drawn out.
Michael, my only point with the second, the second paragraph there, where you are, where you are trying to, to quote it from eight oh eight, you, you're saying, you're saying it's in, it's in the purposes of, of, of Massachusetts zoning. And it is, you can, you can find it. But then Henry's added something that's not in that purpose.
Right, no, I agree with you. I think for that second one, I think we just keep it the way it is. Because we're, we're citing something that preexists.
Yeah, and, and, and I'm fine with what, you know, re-massaging what's above and bulking that a little bit.
Okay.
Henry, part of the problem that we're running into with these Tracer Lane and Kearsarge cases is that the court's essentially saying that unless you can prove it's totally detrimental or significantly detrimental to the public health, welfare, or safety, then you've got to allow these by right and so, or you've got to allow them with much less strict zoning. And so we've got to hit that balance of making sure that in order to do all the things we want this bylaw to do, including respect all of the historical and cultural aspects of a, a site that may be developed, we, we've got to make sure that we haven't just basically relied on history's important, public welfare's important, because the, for the cases that where they allowed the solar, even though the bylaw didn't allow it, they said open space agriculture and concepts like that are just not enough unless you can tie them very cleanly and clearly to public health, safety, and welfare, and you have enough land to develop solar. If you don't have both those pieces, we're not going to approve your bylaw, or we're going to overrule your denial of solar. So that's the place we need this bylaw to be. And I don't want people to think that the planning board or anybody else doesn't think all of these other components, agriculture, open space, historical properties, aren't critical in how we define Chutesbury. But the court has clearly said, just listing those concepts and not being able actually to tie them to the public welfare and safety and have enough land to develop solar someplace in the town, we're not, then we're not going to allow it. We're going to just let them go in. And so we've got to make sure that our bylaw stands so we can control that solar development for all the reasons we want to control it.
And what I'm hearing then is that we should, we should try to abridge that, that, that bullet paragraph there. The one that, that's what I'm.
Yeah.
Michael would say, and, and delete that extra clause from the end of the second one, which Jeff objected to, because it's not e- even in that section of the, of the law being cited. Is that, is that, that, just to clarify?
Correct, yeah, there's. So it has integrity by its own, as saying, you said this, and we're telling you back. And if we add something, then it changes the dynamic a little bit for that second piece. And yeah, and I'll, I can massage the first part. And like I said, I'll, I'll run it by Donna for her legal and strategic sensibility, and I'll run it by you to make sure I captured accurately what was supposed to be captured.
So, so Donna doing that, Michael doing that.
Yeah, Miriam had her hand up for a while.
Yeah, I'm, I'm speaking though. Michael massaging that, that paragraph a little bit, that's okay, post-hearing, and then it can go on. It, I, I, I know after the hearing, you can't rewrite the whole thing and then not have another hearing, but, you know, some massaging that comes directly out of the, of, of the hearing that we've talked about, I assume that's okay to do.
Yes.
Like those answers.
Okay, well, let, good, good. Let's move back to Miriam.
Thank you. Am I allowed to make a comment, Donna? We're subquorum, Henry and I are both on the Historical Commission.
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure I was okay doing that. So my thought about this, we had a lot of back and forth with, at the meeting where we reviewed this, and then the members of the Conservation, not Conservation, Historical Commission sent to draft, sent comments. And I think our thought process around this was to sort of mirror the kind of rationale that was being presented for other areas of regulation in these bullets. It had felt like the original language didn't quite tie it to health, safety, and welfare. We want, thought, we wanted to make that more explicit. We also, I think, felt that the way it was worded originally didn't feel very compelling. It was a little vague. It talked about economics and religion and context. It just, it didn't feel like it kind of hit home to the connection to health, safety, and welfare that we were wanting it to reflect. And then the other piece of it was that thinking that this paragraph would then foreshadow why we have some of the regulations that we have later in the bylaw, including the notification process for historic property preservation. So just creating the rationale for why, for example, there's a provision for noticing thrives, because it's not really explained anywhere here. And it seemed like if, for an uninformed reader might wonder, well, why are they doing all of that? So that was our thought process. Thanks.
That's helpful. Thank you, Miriam.
I don't see anybody else. This is Chairman.
No, I'm not either. I, I had some, I had some minor corrections myself. There's certainly, they're certainly not extremely substantive, but I don't know if we want to do them now or, or what.
Do you have them? Deacon?
Um, can, can you put stuff up on the screen and I can?
Yeah. Hold on, let me.
I have a few minor things, too.
Okay, let's, let's go at the minor stuff. Give me half a second here. Oh, actually, hold on one second. I'm gonna stop sharing for a minute. I'm gonna get the original rather than the one with the blue. Sorry about that, guys.
You mean the clean copy rather than the red line or blue line?
Exactly. Okay. Here we go. Okay. And I will make it bigger so everyone can see. Okay, who wants to go first?
You want to go first, Donna, or me? She's talking to someone else.
Okay. You go, Deacon.
Yeah, go ahead, Deacon.
Okay, so eight, ten, three, C, Michael.
Eight, ten, three, C. Yes.
If you go down to, if, in the, okay, the third line of, ends in permit of, I think that should be permit if.
Okay.
Eight, ten, four. A, one.
Say that again?
Eight, ten, four, A, one. The, the second paragraph, "Sighting of all installations shall be consistent with," instead of will.
I'm gonna jump in here so we don't have to go back through this whole thing. Eight point ten dash four, the, "To protect the public health, safety, or welfare," nope, up, up, up. "The very first, under requirements, to protect that public health, safety, or welfare of the Chutesbury residents as detailed herein."
And then get rid of the other stuff?
No, 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 just add that so that it clearly goes back to your purpose clause, is what I'm trying to do.
Cool.
This one's real minor. Eight, ten, four, C.
On the right spot, right, Deacon?
Yeah.
While Deacon's looking, I would just ask everybody to consider, given Tracer Lane and Kearsarge, the size equal to four times the total area of such installation, does that make this so onerous that we're moving against Kearsarge and Tracer Lane? I, I'm not convinced it does, but I just want everybody to at least make a conscious decision that that much reservation isn't, isn't going to be considered onerous to the point where they may say that's too much. There's no standards created by Tracer Lane and Kearsarge. It's all discussion of concepts. So a lot of this, we are doing the best we can to preserve what we consider to be the values in Chutesbury, but at the same time, trying to fit into those concepts without having specific instructions. So I just think it's something to look at.
Yeah, again, I would, I'll jump in. I mean, I, I'm good with it. I know the board revisited it this summer just to discuss it. And I think the fact that it's specifically nested under mitigation of carbon sequestration, loss of carbon sequestration in forest habitat is, it's not just, it's also relative, because it's, it's expanded, it's scalable.
No, I just, yeah, I just wanted to bring it up, but I'm fine with that answer.
Donna, the, that, that four to one is also what we require for residential subdivisions. You know, the, the four parts open space, the one part development. In this one, we don't require any conservation, any permanent conservation, just a set aside while the solar array is is, is functional. So it, it's not permanently locked up.
All right, no, I just, I just, it struck me when I was reading it. That's why I brought it up. I think those are valid responses.
Robert, question, is there some scientific basis that supports that ratio?
I think that, my sense is it's precedent based on the other parts of our zoning. I don't think there's any scientific proof. I mean, there's, no one's done that anywhere in the world, I think, to say, we, you know, we need this much carbon sequestration for this developed land. It's probably, we probably need more than we've got. And we're losing it quickly.
Thank you.
I'm in better shape. So eight, ten, four, C, four. This is a real minor one, Michael.
Okay.
Never mind that one.
Mind that one, mind that one. You're leaving C. Mine's even underlined in green. It, it's either no right of public access.
That's, it's the plural singular thing.
Exactly, exactly.
And the green line went away.
All right, there you go.
Sometimes you can appreciate Microsoft. I don't usually trust it. Oh, there's one below this. And five, a cellar holes post. I'm wondering what that is. Something farmsteads is a made up word. I can go back and look, but Jeff, do you know what this was originally?
Say that again?
If you look, you see where I'm highlighting?
Hold on.
My, my copy just says farmsteads post isn't in there.
Cool. Okay, that worked, that works better.
What was the word that came out?
Post, P O S T.
Oh, no, it's me.
Okay.
I think it should say past farmsteads. This is Leslie Bracebridge. That was my reading.
Oh, thank you, Leslie.
There you go.
All right.
Good job, Leslie.
Yay.
Takes a lot of minds to get this thing written right. What else you got, Deacon?
Elizabeth and Bert have a hand up.
I know, but do your, do your rest of your edits and then unless.
No, no, that's it. That's it.
Oh.
I'm not done. I'm not done.
Okay.
This one is eight.
What?
Yeah, we're on eight, ten. This one is about eight, ten.
Eight, ten, well, we're in eight, ten, everything. So eight, ten, what?
On page, page three. On page three, line fifteen.
Line fifteen. What, what bullet is it?
One.
Right there.
Or what's it start with, the line?
"A small rural town." Is that the one?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's, uh, where it says, um, "A small police department." Where it says, um, a small police department compromised of a full-time chief.
We don't need.
Oh, shit, hold on, sorry. Oh, it's definitely comprised. There we go, right? Okay. Donna, what else do you have?
Well, I wanted to make sure if anybody had something before we kept moving on. They could speak up, um. My next one. Is in, oh god, on page nine. Ten, eight point ten, six. C. Two. I'm assuming it got the twenty twenty smart regulations.
Uh.
Very end.
Yeah, yeah.
They're rewriting the smart regulations, so I'd put twenty twenty or as amended or current smart regulations, something. So they're not just tied to the twenty twenty.
Okay. What is the first suggestion, twenty twenty?
Twenty twenty smart as amended.
Service regulations as amended?
Yeah. As amended or updated. Put or updated, because I don't know whether they're amending them or whether they're doing a full full sale update, great. And then in the next one, three. Habitat potential. Regional and statewide improvements on Massachusetts ecological integrity maps by the Department of Environmental Protection. The need for protect. The need for protection, right?
Right, yeah.
And in four. The need for protect, you need protection.
Got it.
There too.
I guess I don't like that word.
Um, in E two. Where it says annual training. I don't know what the cost of these is going to be, and I was wondering if we should soften it to regular training. Or as needed. As opposed to paying for annual training. Just after reading.
Yep.
Like here, subject made me a little nervous.
Should we say needed training? And then it's up to us to figure out or agree upon what what's needed? Because regular could be every ten years.
Yeah, no, you're right, you're right, um. How about for training as needed?
Okay.
Chutesbury Fire Police and Emergency. Jeff, do you think that's too vague? Or anybody else? For that matter?
Should we put maybe we put in the concept mutual agreed as needed or something like that?
Well, I don't want to mutually agree because they could say they think it's needed.
So that we should. So the difference between annual is that it happens every year regardless of agreement. As needed, the way it's written now, it doesn't specify who decides it's needed.
Right. That makes me, yeah. I think and I think they may deter that could be determined that 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 it could be every month, you know?
Let's doubt that.
I I think regular.
Oh, no, it says as designated by the town, so I guess we're good.
Oh, okay, all right.
It says, uh, for training as needed in the Chutesbury Fire Police, as designated by the town, so we're good, okay, that's great.
I think that might be it for me.
Cool.
Well, just don't want to use the word annual. Given that it might not be.
Where do we have annuals?
No, we got rid of it.
No, in the in the fourth line from the bottom, an annual payment in an amount approved.
Oh.
I would just get, I would just say payment and amount approved by the fire.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, thank you.
Cool, good catch.
Yep.
No, and take out A.
Yeah, just put payment, start the sentence with payment.
I love that you guys actually read this.
And get rid of, and there's annual training again on the second to last line. To cover all expenses of training, yeah.
And and of each year isn't good either.
Yeah. Just put July first period. Or semicolon.
Yeah. Will be credited.
To the following training.
Yeah. It's just to show us how one edit is a cascading set of edits. So I see Miriam's got a hand up and Elizabeth and or Bert has their hand up.
Well, I think I think Elizabeth and Bert are ahead of Miriam, so I will call on them.
Actually, I I was behind, but it's a minor thing on eight, ten, one at the end.
Am I going the right direction?
No, you're not.
No, the beginning, the very beginning, Michael.
Eight, ten, one.
Oh, eight, ten, one, got it, okay. Yep.
At DB, at the um. The paragraph that starts with the preservation of historical and cultural resources.
Yeah, I'm gonna rewrite that, but tell me what it is and I'll put it in.
Oh, actually, it looks like it was corrected in the version I got it, it it was it apostrophe S, but it's been corrected, so.
Okay, um. If we're good here, I'll call on Miriam.
Thank you, um, while you're on that page, I just want to remind you that that last paragraph, there is an L missing in the word public.
Oh, yes, I forgot to do that, damn, hold on.
Right, okay, and then.
Wait, wait, I don't want to leave it.
Don't leave it.
Yeah, really.
Okay, and then, um, under on page six, under mitigation, the provision around stormwater, I had a. Little minor wording tweak, so you were, the idea here, I think, is that, you know, if a circumstance arose. Where they were working outside the buffer zones, so there was no noticement intent. And it was, uh, the stormwater was just being reviewed. By the planning board and not the conservation commission, that you wanted to have some standards for evaluating stormwater. And the last sentence, um, where it says shall be consistent with mass D P stormwater standard, so. I guess you're deciding that you don't want to hold them to those standards. But the question I have is, is it's a little vague saying shall be consistent with, because you could have something that's extremely minimal. But not in conflict with those stormwater standards, so I'm wondering if. It would be um, more illuminating to say shall be consistent with the aims. Of the Massachusetts, uh, and the actual stormwater standards should be capitalized, store the S in stormwater and standards should be capitalized.
Hold on, I got it.
Both of them, because they're a thing, they're not just any standards, they're the standards. But I'm just wondering if it would be more clear to say shall be consistent with the objectives of or the aims of or something like that. So that you have some way to figure out whether some standard.
We can't say that they have to comply with them?
You could, that was what my original recommendation had been, is just say that shall meet. That would be my recommendation, but.
Adhere to.
Adhere to or meet to shall meet the standards.
Any objections on the board to doing the meter adhere to? Okay. So I just.
I think that's clear to say that they're gonna meet them and that you're gonna use those standards. And okay, I, you know, again, you can waive things if you've did show you it's too onerous. Um, but if they're outside of buffer zones, it shouldn't be that hard for them to do that.
Miriam is is waiving them in the standards themselves or we need to put that in?
Well, you have that overall provision and the whole bylaw that they can't, you know, in some circumstances you can waive things, so I don't think I can restate that.
All right.
Yeah.
But I think this is better.
Miriam, that's all for your.
That's all.
What do I do?
Yeah, no more, I'm good, thank you.
I think Mike's got to stand up and speak.
Mike.
Thanks, say, um, back on that, um, the E S S part there, um, just talking about, um. The um, the owner operator needs to um, uh, pay for the training for the shoot. Chutesbury Fire Police, et cetera, but then it also said that that the owner operator needs to provide its own emergency response team. Is that, is that something? Different than what the police and fire, Chutesbury Police and Fire would do or something?
Yeah, so the the story, the short story of of. Energy storage, Mike, is that the current technology is lithium ion batteries, and so. What's a known problem with lithium ion is that they, the batteries can heat up and catch fire. And then as they heat up, there's a high risk of a thing called thermal runaway, which is one battery heats up and then. Heats up enough to cause the next battery heat up and as and the they heat up and then they catch fire and they keep going. And so. The problem with the lithium ion batteries is you can't put them out with water, you have to let them burn themselves out over time. So water is used as a heat container and a heat reduction. Um, strategy, but not a extinguishing strategy. And so, and there's highly toxic chemicals that are released in the combustion of battery of lithium ion batteries. So unless you have a specially trained. Group of folks who know what they're walking into, um, who don't just think, oh, this is a fire, we do what we usually do with a fire. They're good, it's gonna be unsafe for the emergency staff, um, and it might be un ineffective as well. So it, the idea is that you need to have people who can get on the ground, who know how to deal with these fires.
Well, I I I'm I'm still kind of confused, well, so are you saying that, um. Um, the training that the Chutesbury Fire Department would have. Would not allow them to deal with this and that there'd have to be a um. Additional emergency response team, which would be provided by the owner operator.
Mike, that's correct, the bottom line is is that the Chutesbury Police, Fire and Emergency Management would need to be trained. On how to safely manage the site. Until emergency trained personnel could get in there to really deal with it. So you can't have the fire department just rushing in and pouring water on this. Without um, understanding what that does and the need for containment, the need to contain the gases and that kind of thing. So you train your local emergency management team to go in and keep the site. Safe and as secure as you can until a group that comes in with all of the really proper equipment. Comes in to um. To fight it and to clean it up.
Okay, thanks.
Michael, is that correct?
Yes, you did a much better job than I did.
I'm not seeing any hands up at this point.
We're not even seeing your face, Deacon.
Really?
That's better. So Donna, we don't have to. All that we have to do is close the hearing. We're not doing anything except making some minor edits that we agreed upon and then making it available to the select board. For consider for inclusion in a warrant.
Right, unless you want to. Endorse it, you know, make a motion to endorse it and have somebody write a one pa- page, um.
No.
Any board report.
An extensive planning board report that documents the rationale for why we did this and endorse it.
Or an extensive one, but I mean, you don't have to do that tonight, I don't know when it's gonna be put on the warrant, so.
Yeah.
And what your timeframe is, but I would at least. Move it forward.
Yeah.
So Donna, are is 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 Michael free to do any other? Editorial work on this other than the specific items that were discussed and agreed to here?
I mean, if they're not substantive and they're minor and they're just tweaks, yes, I believe so, I think the point of. The hearing is to, you know, get these comments, make changes that make sense. But if you, you know, as you know, at some point you cross that threshold, what would so change Jeff to have another public hearing? And there's no definition of what that is, we certainly haven't hit that threshold now. I think all of these things are just sort of writing better what's already there. But if Michael changes something dramatically, then we would have to go back to a hearing.
I have I have no desire to change anything except that one tweaking of the historical blurb, the bullet. So.
Do we have any information about town meeting date?
Donna, have you heard anything?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I it's, I mean, the last I heard was like December, maybe January, but I mean, it's. I think we're, I mean, the town has to pay for the school roof, so if we're gonna do that, there has to be something in a timely fashion, but. I don't know when that is.
So I I make a motion to close this public hearing, uh, he- hearing no further testimony.
Second.
Okay. Um, discussion?
We can, we can endorse Donna after we close the hearing, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't hear any discussion. Michael, my screen would show better if you stopped share.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Let me, hold on, let me get, let me do that. I forgot I was doing that.
Okay, so so, um, discussion on closing the hearing, I I haven't heard anybody say anything. I'll call the roll, um. Jeff Lacy?
Hi.
Jeff Weston? I don't think he heard me.
Aye.
Okay, um, Robert?
Aye.
Is Steve here?
No.
Okay. Um, Michael?
Aye.
Nathan?
abstain.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I I'm an I, um, did I miss anyone?
No.
Okay, the hearing's closed.
So. I'll I'll move that the planning board endorses. The solar bylaw as with amendments as discussed to, uh. The historic bullet. Wait, I I'll just say again, I moved to the planning board endorse the solar bylaw with subsequent amendment to the his historic and cultural preservation board.
Second.
Okay, discussion? I'll call the roll, um, Jeff Lacy?
Aye.
Jeff Weston?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
Um, I'm assuming that, uh, I'm assuming that Nathan is a is an abstain, is that correct?
That's correct, abstain.
Okay, then I'm an I, and um, I hope I got everybody.
So I think the last piece of business is I'm happy to volunteer to write up a draft committee report and then. Given the timing, I think we can just discuss it at the next meeting. Unless there's a surprise town meeting, in which case I can just send it to Deacon to look at. And Donna, would you like me to include it? That might be a helpful thing since this might be just backup material if ever we have to defend it.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay.
Hey, good, good. I would, I, I would note that that Jeff has secured access to. To Welock for us to do inspections at rain times. Do you want to say something about that, Jeff?
Okay, before we do that, can I just jump in before Liz Donna, because Donna might just want to bail?
Might want to.
Yeah, so. This, I think this is unexpected by the chair thing, so I'll bring it up, but we got that email with the special permit.
Yeah, we're gonna get, we're gonna get.
So, yeah, I just wanted to mention so Donna knows that we got one. I don't know if she was aware, so just, I don't think, we probably don't need you for that.
We must.
Me for that.
I don't know. I wanted you to know that we got a special permit for an open space plan.
Did, did you all authorize, Michael, to write the report? Did you finish that?
Oh, I just volunteered. Should I get authorized?
Well, no, I think that's fine. I don't think it.
Yeah, no one's fighting for this opportunity.
Right, so you're done with me?
I hope so. I hope so. I think so.
Not at all.
This what this.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so Jeff, did you want to talk about Welock access?
Yeah, for the purposes of. Of monitoring the. The drainage down into the basin. We have permission to go during rain event. Cool. And I believe we can go individually. We can go as a, you know, subgroups if we wish. You know, this is for the Concom, where the, where the permit granting authority here. So. We can go in and do that. And then talk about it at meetings. And I I told him, I said, we need to just see how the thing works as as it's been modified and 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 fixed up. Before we decide whether we're going to. Ask them for any more work or any more changes, which we need to see how it works in a real, real rainstorm. And in the aftermath. So we have permission to do that and. And I. As as far as what I reviewed with him, it was just for the purposes of of the basin, not looking at the whole wandering around the whole site, but. You know, right up to that second fence, seeing what's coming down there, what, you know, what's in that water. And then tracking it down the basin to see where it goes in the basin and how much capacity the basin had, stuff like that.
Thank you for doing that.
It's all good. It's all good. Okay, so. Let's, let's go on to the, to the, to the minutes that we have. Start with eleven eight.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of eleven eight, two thousand twenty-two.
Do I hear a second?
I'll, I'll, I'll second it, I guess. I had, I I had a few little comments on, on. On. The July eleventh ones. And.
Well, eleven eight.
Oh, oh, wait a minute, eleven eight.
Yeah.
That's, that's two thousand twenty-one.
Right, twenty-one, yeah, sorry, I said the right wrong year.
Oh, oh, I I just got that this afternoon. I I can't vote on that.
Jeff, Jeff, I sent the cop, I just want, I sent the copy out like a couple of weeks ago. The copy I sent out today. Was it just revised with some edits? But I did send it out a few weeks ago, so you might have looked at it then.
I might have. I can't remember what I did a couple of weeks ago.
No, I I get it. But just so you know, it that it, today was not the first time it was sent out.
Okay, well, I'm sure if it's good with others, it's probably fine.
Okay.
Okay, so does anybody else want to, want to speak to eleven eight?
Can't wait to pass it.
Yeah, you know, just real quick, Deacon, I just want to. Clarify a little bit of it because I did get some edits from Michael and. You know, I think, you know. For the most part, it's not substantive, but I'm just going to share my screen real quick if that's okay.
Yeah, and these are, these are different from what you sent out this afternoon?
No, what this is what I sent out this afternoon. So we have. Everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, okay, so one thing was, you know. You know, Jake Messier on associate membership. And Michael went to take out. And wanted to just put it as associate membership and I was just, you know. I just had it on there because that was as it appeared on the agenda. So it's a small thing, but I just figured I would. Kind of run it by, see if anyone objects to take it to just making it associate membership or if we should leave it with. With the actual agenda item was. As as posted.
Yeah, the reason I changed it is because we talked about Ashley as well and in I'm seeing actually on the paragraph. Nathan, where it starts with Ashley, her name is spelled wrong. It's spelled wrong.
Yeah, you're right. Okay, yeah. Yeah, so, yeah, I'm not, you know, I don't feel too strongly about it, but it was just like, since, since we have some time for discussion, I feel like we'll do it. No one, no one else. Okay, that's fine. There was also this question of Worcester Trust Fund Commission or Michael said maybe it was the Greater Worcester Community Foundation. Does anyone takes that here, is he?
No. So I know what I I remember talking to him about that. So having worked for the community foundation in Western Mass, I paid attention to that.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just make a change based on that and. Yeah, okay. I think that might be it. I'm glad you caught her name, Michael.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. And then, Michael, this, this thing here. Provided measured power changes may affect the value of a budding properties. So, yeah, you know, this is our whole conversation about changing the bylaw around in the Lake Wyola district with nonconforming structures, so on and so forth. And. You're just talking about.
Just the word bank, the bank, the bank was the thing that threw me.
Okay. Well, do you want to, do we need to make a, a change or?
You just explain what you meant and then I would know it.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Is it, is it a blanket? I mean, what does that mean, a bank assessment?
A bank assessment is like a, like a property assessment.
Are you?
Like what you did, like you had an assessor come and look at your.
Yeah, 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 no, that part I got. Okay, so.
The, the, the word shouldn't be assessment, it should be appraisal, probably.
Yeah, okay, that's a.
Okay. That makes more sense. Okay, now I understand it.
Yeah, no, yeah. Yeah, okay, that's, that's, that does it then. I think so that I'm pretty sure that's definitely. Yeah. Yeah, okay, so. That's all I have. That would conclude. Discussion from my end unless anyone has anything else. One. Anymore? Are we ready to vote? I'll call the roll. Nathan. An enthusiastic eye.
Okay, Jeff Lacy.
Hi.
Jeff Weston.
I.
Michael DeCara.
An appreciative I.
Of Robert.
I.
I'm an I. If I missed anybody, call out. I, I think we're good.
Just, thanks. Thank you again, Michael, for helping with the review on that. Appreciate it.
Okay. Six thirteen.
Is it? So it's thirteen dot twenty-three, right? I think that's correct.
That, yeah, that's a, that's a typo on my part.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes of June thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion.
I think the only thing I'll just share with everybody is before Carrie sent them out, Deacon and I went through. The June and the true Julys with her. So everything that you saw to consider already got sort of wordsmithed and. Looked at.
You can depend on us.
Well, it's just good to know, like, whose eyeballs were on it and got to say something about it.
That's right. So, so I I was happy with it. Does anybody, I don't hear anybody saying anything. Are we ready to vote? I'll call the roll again. Jeff Lacy.
I.
Jeff Weston.
I.
Robert.
I.
Michael.
I.
Nathan.
I.
I'm an I. Good. Let's do seven eleven.
I'll move to approve the minutes of July eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
So who who seconded?
Jeff Lacy.
Okay. Discussion. Hearing none, I'll call the roll. This is great. Jeff Weston.
I.
Michael DeCara.
I.
Jeff Lacy.
Hi.
Nathan.
I.
Robert.
Stain wasn't there.
Okay, I'm an I. We got that one.
I'll move to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
You're ahead of me. Good, good. Second.
Second, Jeff.
Discussion. Oh, this is great. I don't, I don't hear anybody. Good, I'll call the roll again. Jeff Weston.
I.
Jeff Lacy.
I.
Nathan.
I.
Michael.
I.
Robert.
I.
And I'm an I. Good.
So, Deacon, before we adjourn, I just have a question following up on the minutes. Does it make sense to just sort of report out on our. Land use clerk feature?
I think it's a really good idea.
Carrie, do you want to share?
So I'll probably be leaving in the beginning of the year to pursue something that I've been studying while here.
So me, so it means we're losing Carrie and we have to get a replacement. And it sounds like Deacon and Becky are already talking, but. It came up last week when we were looking at minutes, so.
Well, I, I. Yeah. I, I don't think we know what's going to happen with this position at this point. The. A replacement as administrative secretary. Is on board at this point. I met, I met her today. I, I believe her name was Genevieve Bickford. In previous conversation. Becky has suggested that, that the new administrative secretary may be able to do minutes for us. Becky has said that she is exploring alternatives for the conservation part of the land use clerk job. So. I think this is, this, things are a little up for grabs. I'm not, I'm not sure what's happening. I think we need to stay on top of this.
Well, we have a special permit application that that has arrived.
That's right. And we need to talk about that.
And, and so the, the sixty-five day time clock is ticking already.
Yes, since, since, since the thirteenth.
Right, so, all right, so we're early, we're early into it, but, you know, we have to, we have to have a public hearing on this thing and. We. And, and, and so normally the land use clerk would be, would be. Kind of supervising this and tracking the steps and taking care of sending things out to the. Parties. You know, getting an ad in the paper, doing all that stuff. So I just wondered if Carrie has time to, to get that underway before she leaves.
Yes, sorry, I feel like I wasn't really prepared to talk about this tonight, so I wasn't like. Yeah, but I don't know exactly when, like, I don't have like a time date or anything like that. I was like estimating around the beginning of the year, but nothing's like set in stone, but it was something discussed. But.
Okay.
Yeah, I hadn't. Like brought it to Becky personally, it was brought down, like a, Miriam had asked me about it because I had been studying drinking water treatment. Around the same time I started this position. And so I'm kind of wrapping that up and looking to get my licenses in that field. So I'm trying to get my second license by the beginning of the year and. She had known about this, so she had asked me and then. And I, like I said, I haven't really liked set in stone this, but like I hadn't discussed it with Becky yet, so I wasn't really prepared to speak about it tonight.
Okay, Carrie, sorry if I put you on the spot. I thought it was, since we had chatted about it, it was just good to share with everybody, but I apologize.
I totally understand. That's why, like, it was kind of already, like, discussed, just not completely, because I knew I wanted to give, like, a. A notice in advance, like, as soon as possible, so that way it could be planned accordingly.
Okay, but in, in the meantime, we have this special permit and we have, you know, we have twenty steps to follow. And we need to do it correctly. Whether it begins with Carrie and then we take it over or. What, I don't know, but. Can I be given the ability to screen share for a second? By someone?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, where is it? There we go. Everybody seeing this?
Yep.
Just very special permit checklist. So I created this a long time ago generically, and then we adapted one for Schutzbury. So, so this. Runs down and Linda Ava Scott and I believe the other land use clerks, and I think Carrie, I think you have copies of these things. This, this runs down what everybody's supposed to do with a special permit, twenty steps. The first phase is, is a application phase, there's three steps there. Then there's the public hearing, steps four through twelve, and then the decision phase, which are steps thirteen through twenty. And this is a little key as to who does what. So. We're going to follow this. And avoid procedural errors. In, in, in doing this next project, which is an open space design, which has been before us, before they came, they found out our bylaws had changed. They weren't too happy about it. I don't know if you remember this one, board members, but.
We do.
Right, but now they're back with something. And so we need to get this, we need to get this correct. I assume the application has been filed. With the town, with the clerk. with the town, with the clerk, and start there, and then filed with us. So I, I imagine it's gone through these two phases. Now copies need to be sent to other boards. And some of those boards are listed in our bylaw, like the Conservation Commission and and, and a few others, and that's so they have time to look at them before the public hearing. And then we gotta set a hearing day and go down through all these steps, make sure they're all done, so.
Yeah, and one, one, well, one big question I have is, do we, do we want to set a hearing date tonight? What do we want to do about hearing date?
Well, we can do it at our next meeting, right? We still have plenty of time.
Our next meeting is, is eleven fourteen. I don't, it doesn't seem to, that seems to me to be probably pretty early.
Early in what regard, Deacon, for like letting other?
Well, it doesn't give, you know, well, it doesn't give other boards time. It doesn't give them thirty-five days.
Okay, so the fourteenth is roughly thirty days, right, or thirty-one? And we have to do it within sixty-five, the first hearing? Is that right?
But within, within sixty-five of ten thirteen.
Yeah, so that brings us to December eighteenth, I believe. So we could do this hearing on December twelfth, which is our regularly scheduled December meeting.
Yeah. That works.
So are other folks good with December twelve?
Sounds good.
Yeah, just a question. You know, I, I think, you know, the you know, special permit hearing for the Wheelock Development went on for quite some time with open space design, special permit application like this, would there be any kind of you know, guesstimate as to what kind of, you know, whether, you know, you might be able to wrap it up at one hearing, or, you know, like, is there a possibility it would be continued over, you know, multiple hearings?
It's always possible.
It's kind of what I figured the answer would be, I just, you know, I don't know if anyone, it's just.
I mean, uh,
You know, is it not the world's most complicated project? Two lots, I think, it must be down.
Well, no, actually, Jeff, I, I, I went into Town Hall today and and with the intention of looking at this stuff, I only spent five minutes and I'm not on top of it, but I believe that at this point it is for one lot.
Down to one?
I believe so.
Okay, well, makes it even more simple.
Well, let's hope so.
So, do we have to figure out if anyone's in a butter amongst us?
No, that's taken care of, that's, that's the abutters list is provided, uh, is provided by the assessors, we don't, we don't have to figure it out.
Yeah, no, I was thinking about if we, the board, if we are among the abutters, so that we would tap Ashley or Jake.
I don't believe, I don't believe anybody lives close to that.
Okay. All right, that's good.
I mean, it's on, it's on Leverett Road, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what, what's that date again?
Twelve twelve. So, I'll, uh, I'll let, I'll let the applicant know that, 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 that's the date we're thinking.
Yep.
All right, and, and so the chair will work with the land use clerk to make sure these steps are followed and.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I, I think that it, it's not too, there's not too much now, we need to get the copies sent to the other boards and
Yep.
And we need to we need to do that pretty soon. And then we'll have to do we have, we have quite a bit of time to get the, to get the noticing together.
Okay, all right, well.
But, but the other boards and notifying the applicant, I think, need to happen right away.
Yep.
Okay, great.
Yeah, so, um,
I'll stop sharing here.
Good.
Because Carrie, you have this, right?
Yeah, and I've already started everything. I basically, like, once his date is set, I'll send out the notifications. I had done this before for ZBA one other time with Linda, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, and the yeah, and the list of boards to be notified, I believe, is in the text of the zoning.
Yeah, there's a little template that I follow when I give open notices and it lists who I give it to.
Okay, good, good. Good.
By motion to adjourn, Deacon.
Um, let's, let's make sure that everybody's happy with where the discussion is first. Does anybody want to talk about this special permit anymore? Yeah, make the motion.
Sorry, I was just want to make sure that everyone was able to open it. I know it was a hard time everyone opening it, because I had to go through a Google Drive, because it's really big. Um, I've been getting notifications to, like, share it with people, which I've been doing, so want to try again with the other emails. They had tried to open it before, it should work now.
Yeah, I did, I did unzip it and then reload it to the planning board site, so I thought everyone could have seen it if I did it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I know some people had some difficulties.
Yeah. No, that was good, Michael.
Okay, I think if I couldn't open it, it was gonna be hard.
I couldn't open it either. I think, yeah.
There's a flash drive with everything on, if anyone needs to, like, download it directly from the computer.
Okay, so.
And I don't think there's anything preventing us from having a field visit before the hearing. Um, we can probably do that.
That might be good to do in November in case it starts snowing at some point.
Right, because there are wetlands around out there, we want to be able to see where they are. Um, so we might mention to the applicant that we'd like to go out there as a board, because sometimes they like to come, they like to come with.
Will do, will do. When I notify, when I notify them about the hearing date, I, I will mention that too.
Okay, then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, discussion? I don't think we need to call the roll, I think consensus, I think we have consensus. Unless somebody wants to object.
I, I think you should just call the roll, because otherwise we'll be meeting for a month or something.
Okay, okay. Jeff Lacy? Jeff Weston?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
Nathan?
Aye.
Robert?
Aye.
I'm an I.
I think one meeting we should all be called Jeff.
Good, that's good, we can just change their names on the Zoom, so we're all just like Jeff, 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 Jeff.
Exactly, Jeff Murphy, Jeff Big Car, Jeff Fungus.
All right, good night, everybody.
Good night. Thank you all.
Good job.